So Blake received the letter?
Pardon?
Blake received the letter?
No, I got it in my email. I received that letter in my email.
It was digitally sent on May thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
It was not sent to us until... I got it from back through my email to the leader. Until July, we received it. Because we made... We were talking about it took him... It was done in May thir... by May thirtieth, but we didn't receive it until July.
So is it through mail or through email?
Email.
Okay, so there was another one that... okay, so this is the May thirtieth. That says... That you are not supposed to spend or oblige any funds currently on hand. There was also... A letter... so this one was signed seven thirty one, and I think that's the one that you're referring to. That you didn't get until July, which is... A one-page document with the forfeiture guidelines highlighted here. That was sent seven thirty one. And reaffirms the do not spend status. The letter from May thirtieth was prior to that and says, "While in a do not spend status, the Seward County Sheriff's Office is precluded from receiving any additional treasury equitable sharing funds and from spending or obligating any treasury equitable sharing funds currently on hand." So there's two letters.
The one telling us that we're in a do not spend status. When we received it in July, we noticed it was dated, May thirtieth. But the email that I got when I received it was in July. I can find my email.
Okay, so... Probably would like to see when that was sent for sure, but regardless, we're not all in agreement as to whether or not to sign the ESAC. I think I sort of tried to hit at this earlier. What steps need to be taken to get us to a place where we can do that? Not just wait until the end of the year to see if another drop comes in. What steps can be taken to get us in a better position to oversee those funds?
So, as I continue to make recommendations for it, I think that we need to do a thorough review of all of these documents. I also think that we need to thoroughly review the investigation, the audit from NSEB, because I believe that there are some recommendations that are still set forth in that document, but we need to have the time to be able to do that. And I've spent several days that I should have been doing other things trying to piece this together. That's not fair. Because there's a lot of information out there about what has occurred that we are not privy to. There's still outstanding information that plays into all of this that we do not have in hand. So I don't think that, well... Based on what it says and what we are agreeing to sign, under penalty of perjury, I will not be signing or making a recommendation that we sign this document. And I would recommend that the board not sign it at this time of the audit. So my recommendation would be that we table it so that we can review those findings from the audit and we can set forth a plan as to what is agreeable and what needs to be done in relationship to equitable sharing funds.
So, what I'm hearing is the items on the budget that are currently being paid for out of Treasury and Justice is now going to be paid for by the...
Or now, I agree.
No, no, see, I disagree with that because these, these items were budgeted inappropriately. They should not have been paid for out of Treasury or Justice. So the board should be paying those items.
Not necessarily.
So how are they going to be paid?
That is going to be up to the sheriff to decide with the budget that he's given, but it could result in a reduction in staff. It could also result in the sale of the building.
That doesn't... that does... all that does is wipe out utilities.
So... What I was going to say earlier was it's very hard for me to see what a path forward looks like because I don't have a budget that shows me how you're going to pay for all the things that you're going to pay for, right? Because there's no real, like, plan that says, okay, so if you're not going to sign the ESAC and we're going to have to absorb these additional costs, what those additional costs are. It's not really put on the budget for us to look at, right? So first and foremost, it would be really helpful to have that. Just, you know, obviously you're talking about utilities, you're talking all of the other expenses. It would be helpful to have that to see. But ultimately, that doesn't mean that the board agrees to fund all of those things. It, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we continue to agree to do it now. We cannot, in my opinion, we can't say, "Okay, Mike, you have to let go of X number of stuff." But it does say we have the ability to set the budget as to what we feel is correct for you to be able to perform the duties of your department. That's our role. Your role is to spend that budget responsibly and within that budget and make sure that those duties are completed. Again, we're not going to sign it. And here's the thing, even if we do sign it, there's no funds coming, so I'm a little bit torn. Because I think either way, we need a better picture of what that looks like back in the budget.
And we can't supplant the budget.
Planning... What you're going to do with money you receive is not budgeting. You're planning on how to spend that money. That's not budgeting that money. Anytime you give any money in your personal life or anything, you plan on what you want to spend it on. You know, you make plans for that. You make patrol cars for weapons.
And I hear what you're saying, and I, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is if it's planning, and it's, okay, we're going to spend less out of the general fund because we've received a drop and now we're able to pay for it out of that, right? That's why I'm saying, I think we need to see what it actually costs without it. And then, if, if it were to come forward, right? If we were to get a drop, then hey, I can pay for this, I can pay for this. And then there's a balance that goes back to the general fund at the end of the year. That's where I'm coming at it from.
And that's why we give money back in the general fund budget over here, you know? Again, we all... we had an agreement here where we'd get last year's budget plus raises and then I would make it work. Without signing that ESAC, I can't make it work. Everybody here knows that.
I, I feel like you're... You're trying to pressure the board to sign the ESAC to offset your general funds with funds that can't be budgeted for in the first place. And honestly, Sheriff, you've put us in this position in the first place. We would be in a lot better position if we had known all of this information from the get-go, but we weren't privy to it. And so now, I feel like we're hamstrung, or that's what's being attempted to be done. You're trying to hamstring the board by saying, "If you don't do this, then this." And we can't, we can't... Because you're using, because you're using the... Those funds to supplant your budget. And that's what part of the issue is. And, and that's what the reality is. Because you, as the elected official, have to put forward a budget to account for all of these things. And you said that you were going to ha... What you proposed was your budget from last year plus expenses. But you were trying to encompass all of the funds, the equitable sharing funds, which...
There was a lot of things put into that, our ability to make it work. Because we've done them, things have been changed in the department. And yes, we were planning on using some of the asset forfeiture to make that work. But that is not... It's just stating facts. It's not a threat. I mean, it's, it's, it's different than what you stated. You stated, "Be to get rid of the past, which we won't sign it, equitable sharing." Now that...
I don't think that statement was ever said.
That was made by you sitting right there.
I really don't recall ever making that statement. I'm, I'm not sure where that was.
I may have said that you need to take your task force and reconstitute it. I never said get rid of it.
No, you didn't say.
I just said reconstitute it into something different that works.
Commissioner Allen was the one that came up with, with him, we won't sign the ESAC.
Let me ask you something here with this as we're talking. I mean, we're done with, with Treasury. You have no, no money in Treasury as it stands right now. The chances are that you're not going to get any of the Treasury. But you do have some left over in Justice. I think the last time I saw was around sixty thousand maybe. And then, we don't know if there's going to be any more Justice money in it. We don't know if there's anything coming.
Yes, we do.
Well, then, it doesn't mean that we don't know for sure that it's coming this fiscal year. We just know that it's in this first one. We don't know when it's coming. We just know it's there.
We have something in the discretionary portal.
Right, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to come this year. Right?
Well, once it gets out of Justice, it's all... there's a gun online and they have different portals that it's in. And you can see where it's at at that time. We know within sixty-nine days this is coming. We know within eighteen months from one of our major cases, that will come around December.
Maybe, though. There's no, there's no way to know that for sure. So to narrow the question, I, I guess I follow to that and say, going back to the agreement that we made previously where I think it was option A, okay, where you said it's, it's basically covering everything, same budget as last year, increases in salary, the difference between captain's wages and salary and the investment, whatever. If you were to... so if there's sixty thousand dollars running out and that's what you're banking on, my question to you is, should the budget that you submit show sixty thousand dollars more balancing? Because there's no way to know that that drop is coming in or not. And I'm asking this because for budget purposes, if we already agreed on option A and you're saying that was based on being able to utilize the funds, if you don't sign the report, those funds that account for, say, sixty thousand dollars, well, then that tells me that they would have to spend sixty thousand dollars back into your budget. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure if I understand you. The sixty-some thousand that's in there now is a long history.
You're... what I'm saying is you're, yours... when we agreed previously, option A, you said, and you've been saying this today, you agreed to that previously thinking you could use those funds. So if the ESAC report is not signed, you can't use those funds, would it not be the same thing just adding sixty thousand dollars back to the budget? Technically, you shouldn't be banking on money that's not coming in, right?
Well, I promise the board we'll not make it work. There's a lot of different things that make it that work.
Right, so you would still make it work with the sixty thousand dollars, right? So if the board were to add sixty thousand dollars to it, what I'm saying, you would have the same total from what's in Justice right now added to your budget to make it work since potentially we're not signing the ESAC. That's what I'm asking. Are you guys following, or?
I understand, I understand where you're going. I think the problem is, is that his, and correct me if I'm wrong, his plan is to use funds that have not been received.
That's, that's where I'm trying to go.
That's how he's going to make his budget work.
That's where I'm trying to go.
Part of it, part of it.
I understand the changes that you've already suggested and put forward. However, that does not account for funds that have not been received. And that's what you're banking on, is you're banking on that you're going to receive those funds that you can't budget for them?
Which is why I'm saying, technically, what we previously said, plus sixty thousand dollars, what I'm saying is you think you can make that work. So if that's the balance that's basically in the Justice funds and what we already agreed on for the whole year, you think you can make that work. That would not, that's not banking on any drops. That's just saying.
Well, I would be counting on some drops.
What if drops didn't happen?
Pardon?
What if drops didn't happen? What was your play then?
Well, we have a contingency plan on things to... Personnel issues and some other things. I don't want to make it work, and I won't make it work.
My look at her is you got sixty in, in Justice. And even if you took them and I identified that as salary, straight salary, knowing what you want to use it for, and I'm saying probably your, your upper level personnel, primarily your captains, your task force commander, whatever. You've got to burn through that about five months. And that means that you can't spend any of that because you're basically identified for salaries. You've already identified almost two grand to go to your conference here coming up, and that's coming out of Justice. So, I mean, I...
That is reimbursed, though.
Where does that come from, reimbursed?
Justice reimburses.
But we cannot use Justice funds for salaries because they have to have the reapproval for that, which we don't have.
We don't have the reapproval.
So it would not, it would be a hundred percent ineligible for salaries.
So the sixty is basically off the table for anything salary-wise. All you can use that for is equipment and, and other items that are permissible under, under Justice's regulations. So the salary issue then becomes paramount here as they move forward.
So if we move forward, knowing full well that we have overtime being paid out of funds, we have utilities that are being paid out of funds, how, how can we go forward with your recommendation of the sheriff would make it work? Because you can't.
That's why I suggested the drop that extra sixty thousand dollars.
Well, that's not going to be enough.
He says it is. He's been saying it will work. He says it will make it work.
He's counting on, he's counting on us signing the ESAC and those funds coming in.
But you can't...
I understand that, and I don't disagree with you. I, this is what we've been talking about before. At what point do you, do you move forward so you can move forward?
I, and I understand a hundred percent what you're saying. And that's what I, that is why the following agenda items are on so that we can make a determination, so that we can move forward in this process. But the reality of the situation is, is that if things were to be maintained in their current fashion, right? And there are no equitable sharing funds because we're just going to go with that for right now, right? There are no equitable sharing funds. If we make significant increases to the budget to account for all of that money that they have been spending, and I'm not saying, I will say that I don't think that all of those expenditures were necessary. So there is going to have to be, there's going to have to be some trimming of the fat, like significantly. But we need to have that discussion and decide how we're going to move up, move forward. It doesn't mean that it has to be what it is currently today.
So what do you propose we do to share our budget today?
I'm not ready to have that discussion. We need to have this discussion and we need to move forward on this.
We have two weeks, is that right, to get this finalized?
Budget on the ESAC, yes, about two weeks.
Two weeks on the budget.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if we don't do anything for two weeks, what, what then? I mean, we've got to have a budget, we've got to have, the sheriff has to have a budget. We have to approve it in terms of general. So how do we, how do we make that work?
Again, I will say that the item that is on the agenda currently is related to the ESAC. We need to make a decision on that and then we need to move to the next agenda item so we can determine where we're going to go.
Okay, that being said, you would like to sign the ESAC today. Does anybody else want to take a motion to...
So we have to have a motion before we can see actions.
Just said, does anyone want to make a motion, either way?
I would move to sign the ESAC.
I'm ready to chair.
I'll propose the chair to sign the ESAC.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Okay, if there's no second, then the motion dies. Right now, it's table sixty days, is that right? Based on last week, end of October. My question to the board is, if we come up with a... I'm going to say this wrong, system or a new direction on how to utilize those dollars, right? So whether that's the letters need to come to the board and the sheriff, the funds need to kind of happen through a representative or they need to be signed off on, either two representatives or it needs to be a EO system. If we get to that place and develop that, again, I'm not talking about budgets, we still need to deal with that separately, would the board agree to sign the ESAC? If it happened to then lessen sixty days?
I have no issue signing the ESAC prior to the sixty days. If everything is in place and the board feels comfortable that we will be in compliance based on what the ESAC is asking us to certify. But that's a significant amount of work and that's a significant amount of documents that need to be gone through.
And to clarify, we're talking about these things from their letter on page.
It's not just four. It's not just the items that are in the letter. It also is in response to the audit.
But that falls back to the budget, that's what I'm saying. So by this budgetary items.
So technically, the way you're talking, you cannot sign the ESAC because you can't certify the funds of last budget.
Can't certify them? I also can't...
Because we've already signed up on them, but maybe you don't want to certify.
But we didn't know, Scott.
I understand that, but you're, you're not going forward, you're, you're...
I am trying to go forward.
You're held up right here because we've already approved this stuff from twenty-four, twenty-five. That's what we're, that's what we're saying, ESAC, yeah, we, we agree with this. How do you move forward? Do you go back and, and revisit every item?
Well, the Treasury sure is. The Treasury is going back and they're saying that we're not in compliance. So the Tre...
That has not, that, that's not part of the ESAC. The ESAC is, you're certifying that this much money came in, these pay claims were signed, this much money went out. That's all you're certifying.
I will go back to in the document. That is signed on, let's see, six seventeen of twenty twenty-four that specifically states, "Please provide a report generated from Seward County's FMS showing that the agency's treasury equitable sharing funds account has been credited with an amount that results in a balance that is consistent with the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, any balance of three million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars according to six cents." It goes on to say in number two, "In addition, please provide acknowledgement of your understanding that the agency's next to be filed ESAC form will contain an adjustment that results in a reported balance of funds with a corrected fiscal year twenty twenty-two, any balance of funds as discussed above." That was not in that last one that was to be filed. It is also not in this current ESAC. We continue to be out of compliance as to what they have recommended in this compliance review. I will go on to say, again, we passed on claims that we should not have passed on because we did not and did not have access to this information. I would continue to say, "Under penalty of perjury, the undersigned official certified that they have read and understand their obligations under the guide to equitable sharing for state, local, and tribal law enforcement agencies, the guide, and all subsequent updates, this equitable sharing agreement and applicable sections of the Code of Federal Regulations." Cannot say that.
Obviously, from your letter, your last letter, last year's ESAC certification was accepted and verified.
By who? Are you saying by us?
By them. After it was signed here, it was sent to them.
They're also still, you're still under review.
Not for that.
We don't know that because we haven't received any additional information on that. They're still looking into the use of fines.
Or I can ask a question. The report, because it's like a, it's report slash agreement, right? So the report part of this is saying exactly what Scott just said, which is these are the funds that you spent, you're certifying that you spent these funds, right? The agreement side of this, which is the part that I said I had a little bit of challenge with, is us saying, okay, moving forward, we agree all these things. Would it be reasonable to say or to issue some sort of statement with the report saying that we were un... We, we were not basically in the loop with everything that was happening. But that moving forward, adjustments will be made to have the board involved in oversight the same way we would the general fund.
It's a much theory, but how practical setting?
I'm asking that, or what?
I think it would be stronger if you had to see these in place.
That's what I mean. So, sorry, I wanted to clarify. I had said, you know, if we get to a point where we have a plan that says...
Not signing it now, saying that we are...
Right, so we're going to look, yes. I was, no, I was, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if we were to sign it, when we sign it? Submitting something that says we did not know about all of the correspondence going on. And so we did approve these things, we did not fully understand that. But moving forward, we are working on a plan or, or just having that plan in place and sort of detailing what that is.
Yes, I don't know specifically what that would look like, but yes, I'm sure that we could come up with something, some sort of addition. Because otherwise, the other option would be you'd never be able to sign it.
Right.
So I'm, I'm sure that there would be something that we could draft that would give a full picture of everything. And we can attach, we can, the county can do whatever it can absolutely do that. And it's up to them whether they say, whether they say your name, yeah, your name. But I think giving the, them the full picture of the board's knowledge or lack of, it would be...
Well, it's like you're asking for a whole warrant's approval in fact.
Yeah, I agree. Don't sound nice. So right now it's sixty days. So they're asking for six, they've already passed the suggestion that...
We have to go again, right? We have to put another motion out since it was re-discussed? Or does the motion from last week still stand?
Well, it's tabled, so you probably need to do it and then we'll disable it again until...
Okay, so in that sixty days, my question is, one, would that, like, let's say if it had sixty days, we sign it and we have all of the pieces in place that we need in place to be able to move forward? Do you think we can get all of those things in place in that sixty days? Or, which I asked right previously, prior...
I was asked to work with the board. And I believe that's the best path forward, is the board and the sheriff's office to work together. This is not working together. You know you're putting me in a bind by not signing the ESAC for a lack of function. The state law says the general board has to give me the funds to operate on.
We do have to give you funds to operate on, but I think there's historical data that says it doesn't necessarily have to cover all of the activities that are hap, that are happening. And I'm not saying in four letters against that. I'm just stating before we start going back and forth. I actually feel like we are working together. That's why I was going to ask you, do you think we can have all those things in place? And if it is before the sixty days, bring it back around to get it signed? That's what I'm asking. I'm not suggesting...
I understand what you're saying. What you're not understanding is, once you put me out of compliance, it's not going to be a quick fix to get back into compliance. That could take months. They're already working on it, fiscal year... And anybody can check it, the fis, the federal fiscal year starts October. And that's when the very next available treasury drop will cover that thirty-three thousand. And then it, then it was because they owe us so much, then we started getting dropped from treasury. That won't be probably before January, before we get dropped from treasury. Drops from justice, they'll move right along. But putting us out of compliance is a stop at all. You can remark my word. Once you put us out of compliance, there is a good chance that that eight million dollars they owe us, they wouldn't ever see it again.
Even if I made a motion to say, yes, we're gonna sign it today, we don't have the support of the board. So I'm trying my best to figure out how we can get to a place where we can move forward. And that is me trying to work with the board and work with you to, to figure out how we can get there. And so I understand that you're frustrated.
I don't know, yes, I'm frustrated, I'm not mad.
What?
I'm frustrated because I expected this, I did. I didn't, I didn't expect a good outcome today at all. And it's, I go back to the thing where, and I'm not talking Mr. Sabak and I had some back, back last week, this has nothing to do with that. Okay, it has nothing to do with that at all. But everybody expects, every county employee to follow policies and procedures, and I understand that. Some of the policies I wish we hadn't used and all that. Some of the policies like the surplus property thing, we didn't even know that was supposed to be done. And we agreed to do that, once we found out that was a policy. That's not a problem, we need to do that, it's surplus property. But I also know that the commissioners won't ever mind following policies. And I think the commissioners should be following policies just as well.
How do you feel like we're not following policy?
I'm not saying you.
No, that's, I, that's fine, I'm just asking, how do you feel like we're not following policy?
Well, I, I know that, that has nothing to do with what's going on.
Okay.
There's always bringing up-
Okay, so circling back to that, I'm gonna ask again. The, this letter, the one that was dated received on the twentieth. So signed on the seventh, it seems like, received on, it's the one that was regarding Sheriff's County or Stewart County Sheriff's Office equitable sharing compliance review. So she read through it and, and it says, for all these issues, please do the following. So there's those three, I mean, three items listed. Can you do those things? And can you do them quickly? Because I think, number one, that's one of the things, so what I'm trying to do is get us to the point where we say, yes, number one is having some sort of board oversight of the funds. Number two is getting us back into compliance, and I think that's the hesitation to signing it, is we don't know when we're gonna get back into compliance. So can we provide a better timeline as to when these things will be completed?
Okay, what three things?
Uh, written confirmation that all of our personnel understand the properties of treasury equitable sharing funds.
What page? What page is it?
What I'm trying to explain, and maybe I haven't said this. What I'm trying to explain is, Scott, this letter came before other documents. Number, like-
I realize that, I do understand that it came before other documents, but I'm saying, either one hasn't been done, or two, is it being done subsequently? That's what I'm asking.
Explain to me what is gonna be different from today and October sixth, the way of the day, we did, to December two?
It's the end of October.
Okay, in October. What is gonna be different from today and the end of October?
We'll be able to more thoroughly review all of these documents in relationship to what has occurred within treasury and request all of the other documents that were supposedly sent to the treasury in response to the compliance review. So we can look at information and data. Number two, we can thoroughly review the audit and set forth recommendations from the audit in regards to use of equitable sharing funds. And an agreement with the sheriff's department on what that's gonna look like. And then decide who to serve on that panel or whatever it is in relationship to how those funds are going to be submitted for reimbursement.
Can I ask a question on the audit? Should the sheriff not propose how to fix those items that were in audit? I mean, of, of course, like, the board can get involved here, but I'm having over time, because in the same way where, like, he needs to show how the budget works, he needs to show the project.
Isn't it really up to him? So we need to bring Nesbit forward to review the audit and then to go over the recommendations and decide as board how we wanna move forward with that.
Yes, give it to the sheriff. Let's just arbitrarily say we sign the ESAC today. And we've got sixty days down the road and we're not seeing what we want to see. If we have the ability to rescind that ESAC, or is it good for a year and we're ironclad and stuck? Okay, that's a bar question.
I think you can withdraw, I don't know that you can just withdraw. You can't put yourself out of compliance.
Okay.
You can withdraw and say you wanna, no, don't participate. But you can't put yourself out of compliance.
I'm trying to call the tre, treasurer's office, something, and talk to them. She said she couldn't give me information because somebody has filed a review of my information. So I didn't, I couldn't get any information out of that thing pertaining to any of this because she said she can't talk about it. Let me throw a little bit of a compromise out here. I don't want, I don't want to make this sound like a threat, so don't, don't take it wrong. But let's just arbitrarily say we bring this back around and that we have a motion to approve the ESAC. And we finally say, yes, we'll approve it with the codicil. That the sheriff has complied with all of our requests, we've gone through all of the audits with Nesbit, and we're satisfied that everything is the way it should be. And in the absence of achieving those goals, I'm gonna take this up to six months. At the end of six months, if we're not done and we're not happy, we withdraw.
No. I will continue to assert what I have been saying over and over again.
About the perjury thing, I get it.
I will not, I will not perjure myself and I will not perjure the county by agreeing to sign this document.
I try. So with, with what you were saying, how does, how do you not? I guess I'm trying to figure out where you're at. Because you had three different items, that doesn't, that doesn't alleviate you from what you're saying perjury of.
Yes, but we have time then, Scott, to review this, we have time.
But you, but you didn't know about it.
We have time to reach out to the treasury, we have time, we have time.
I tried, somebody filed the information about, I can get it.
It doesn't- It doesn't mean that we, so we just abandon? We just abandon it because it's hard to get through to the treasury? I don't think so. We have an obligation, we have an obligation.
Commissioner Hahn, I can assure you all the documents you have.
I do not.
You do.
I do not. There is information that is reported in these documents that you have shared with the treasury, I've requested those documents from you, I requested them last week. I do not have them in relationship to attachments that you send in with these letters, charts, and everything else.
Captain Morges gave all documents.
She did not.
She did.
We can argue about this until we're both blue in the face, I'm telling you that I do not have all documents. I do not. She answered, she answered questions specifically related to the filing of the last ESAC, which there are also incongruencies with the information that she shared, not with what you shared, Captain Morges, but in relationship to the ESAC itself. Because there were impermissible payments that were made.
I like Darryl's idea, I think maybe we oughta re, rethink, uh, Scott's proposal. I'm really not getting anywhere, I haven't heard a legal opinion out of decision, but advice one way or another from the legal counsel, which we depend upon. We're putting it all on Missy's shoulders. And the legal counsel at least could give us some insight of what she thinks we oughta be doing. I, I can see both sides of it. And it's, it's a tough, tough decision, we shouldn't be in this decision. You're right, Greg, you're, you're right, but some way or another, we could be here for two weeks and maybe not get any further than we've gotten right now unless we, we I, I'm in, I'm kinda in favor of Scott's proposal as I, I was a hundred percent opposed to that, but I don't see any way of, of at least giving that a chance and give us an opportunity. We're between a rock and a hard place, like everyone says, maybe that'll get us up.
I think I did, at least I attempted to provide some information. I can't decide for you whether you-
No, I don't ask you to decide, I just want an opinion.
I raise concerns about whether you can certify the information that they're requesting you to certify at this point, or if you need more information. If you need more information, it's problematic to certify to the federal government something if you're not sure on it. And then I said that what I would suggest is that you give not necessarily today, but when you have a chance to look through all, all of the documents, specific things to the sheriff's office that you would like to see before you sign it. The things in the audit, the suggestions here, the setting up things that you're gonna pay, since the sheriff's office wants to pay for school resource officers with tre, with funds. They need to provide, there, there's an application process they need to do, there's an MOU that they need to do at the schools, there's training that the officers need to have, and there are certain things that need to do. So those were the things that I was suggesting if the board doesn't feel that, feel that can sign it today, that would move you into a better place to be able to sign that at, at a fu, at some point in the future.
Thank you.
This is literally what I was asking, I was saying, what things need to happen to get the board to the place where we want to sign it? And we, we just don't have any answers, which I know we don't want to sign, so we have no answers. So I understand that we may have to review the audit, I would disagree, I can move forward. But I'm gonna go back to what Scott said. We, we already signed off on the accounts, we, we already said, we already spent the money, we already agreed to spend the money, we're the report side of that is us saying, yes, we spent this money. The agreement side is where I asked can, can we put some sort of attachment that says we're only, you know, we're reviewing internal-
I think you should do that after you've made the, after you've done that. If you have, okay, here's what we want, we have this M R, here are, here is the information that we are going to be able to pay for this with the school resource, pay for school resource officer.
Yep.
Here's the approval, here's the MOU, here's the training that they've done, here's the, this is their primary duty. All of those things that are required, it's such a-
Mike, do you have MOUs for all school resource officers? Do they go through a specific training?
A lot of officers are going through the training, but we don't have an MOU with the schools.
Why don't we have an MOU with the schools? I guess I just, I'm frustrated, I'm, I'm literally telling you, I'm frustrated awful because I have zero, there are zero path forward, nobody is saying this, this bar just gave four things.
I gave these things too.
So here's your answer.
If we, if we have the opportunity to table it so we can you, there's not, there's no path forward until we've had the ability to review the information that has been withheld. I don't understand how that could not be any more clear.
What if we have information that we need to review? Because I reviewed the audit, I reviewed all of the information that was shared, is there other things I haven't seen that you're asking for me to review?
That I'm asking the sheriff's department to provide to us so that we can review. There are additional documents. I've, I've said this multiple times. I do have been extremely frustrated. There there are documents that were submitted in response to the compliance letter. The letters, again, that I received from sheriff's hands to the treasury, they are not signed, they are not dated, they refer to additional graphs, charts, other information
Right.
that we do not have. I can tell you, I do not have those documents.
Mike, do you understand that those are the documents that she's looking for?
I don't know what she's looking for.
I, I sent an email last week.
I understand your email, Captain Morges gave you everything that is in the file.
So there is no, in relationship to these two letters, does the board want me to read them? I don't have a date, so I have no idea as to which order these letters went in. memorandum for John Farley, Director, Treasury Executive Office for Asset Forfeiture. On June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, I received a letter from Department of, from Department of the Treasury that provided the results of an equitable sharing compliance review which occurred at the Stewart County, Nebraska Sheriff's Office between ten seventeen, twenty twenty-two through six seventeen, twenty-four. The review encompassed SCSO fiscal years twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. At this time, I respectfully request an extension to address issues highlighted in the review. The SCSO takes matters of policy and compliance seriously. We spoke to Bernadette, Bernadette Reggie? And Beth Putnam on seven, ten, twenty-four and gained a better understanding on how to handle the issues discovered. We interpreted the guidelines in a different manner and need additional time to rectify the issues brought forward. We also realize there may be additional issues in twenty-three and twenty-four we also need to address. Going forward, we feel we are compliant and understand the twenty-four equitable sharing guideline rules. We value our partnership with Homeland Security Investigations Department of Treasury and Treasury Executive Office for Asset Forfeiture. Then we have another letter. Again, it's sent to John Farley, Director, Department of the Treasury Executive Office for Asset Forfeiture regarding Stewart County Sheriff's Office Equitable Sharing Compliance Review Response. Dear Director Farley, since our communication with Bernadette Reggie and Beth Putnam, our office has worked tirelessly to fix the errors brought forward to us from your representatives. Please know that this review is not something our office has taken lightly and we feel we have resolved the issues from the review. Our response to each issue is listed below. Inadequate segregation of treasury equitable sharing funds, advanced payment and loans. Since the review, our staff has met with Stewart County Clerk, Sherry Schweitzer to create a new separate fund that will only be used for slot and other grant funds. The equitable share accounts will no longer be used for any advanced payments or reimbursements of any kind. Items of this nature will be taken out of the separate account completely. Suspension and department requirements, our office understands is confer, conformed with the guidelines relating to the suspension and department requirements. Non-conforming use of treasury equitable sharing funds, equitable sharing agreement, and certification ESAC form issues. Our office has since closed the confidential funds account and will no longer be using this method. All staff members understand that the use of equitable sharing funds for this method is strictly prohibited. The improper transfer of thirty-one thousand, six hundred dollars to Fillmore County was rectified on nine, five, twenty-four. Funds were transferred from our general fund account to the equitable share account to rectify this misuse. This correction will be shown on the fiscal year twenty-five ESAC, attached as a receipt verifying rectification. Don't have a copy of that. Funds inaccurately used by task force replacement personnel. Due to a misunderstanding of the guidelines, our office recognizes that several staff members were inaccurately paid out of the equitable sharing funds. To rectify this issue, our office asks that the discrepancy be waived. To rectify this issue, our office asks that the discrepancy be waived with the acknowledgement that this error will not happen again and has been rectified starting fiscal year twenty five. If this is not acceptable, our office has determined that there were several new staff members that were hired during the period of fiscal year twenty one through twenty four that did fit the guidelines and could have been paid out of equitable sharing funds. We would like to ask that with the assistance of Bernie Reggie, that we are allowed to submit those wages in place of the ineligible wages. And neither of these options are, if neither of these options are acceptable, we ask that our agencies agree upon a payment plan that would allow the wages to be avowed over a longer period that would be fiscally irresponsible for the taxpayers of Seward County. As requested, fiscal years twenty three and twenty four documentation has been provided. Additional forms are available if necessary. We do not expect that some corrections, we do expect that some corrections will need to be made for fiscal year twenty five. In closing, we would like to acknowledge that this review has been very enlightening and informative. Since receiving our initial correspondence, our office has created several new procedures to ensure that these issues do not happen again. We do feel that the twenty four guidelines are much clearer and our office understands the expectations. Your consideration into the matters listed above is greatly appreciated.
Okay. So where, what graphs, references, or whatever are we not? Because in, because I'm writing that list here, I'm trying to figure out all of the things that we're gonna need to be able to move forward.
And I understand that, but I'm getting frustrated because these are not dated.
Right.
So I don't-
They're dated.
These are not dated.
Yeah, nor are they signed.
Right. So I don't know when these went to them. And if this is the actual document though.
Sure.
I don't know that. But then there is additional information in these statements that talks about this stuff. What I'm saying is, is that we need to go through the documents and identify what information we still need to receive. Because there is information that's out there. There's references to graphs. I mean, we could be here all day identifying what it is that we need to specifically ask for, but I'm being asked, I'm asking for time. I'm asking for time to be able to do this. I've done my best. I spent Wednesday and Thursday going through this information, trying to go through this information, trying to create a timeline. And I don't feel like, I don't feel like my request is being acknowledged. I'm being asked for additional time so that we can go through this information so we can set-
Mike, do you have any comment on that?
Greg, how much time do you need?
I mean, I'm asking that we table this until October, like we originally had decided, so that we can thoroughly go through all of this information and then we can create a plan. But I can't do this in a week's time. I can't do this in two weeks' time.
What are you looking for? You have all the documents.
No, I don't. Okay, we're at an impasse because I've already stated multiple times that I don't have all of the documents.
How do you know this?
Okay, so she's, because she's explained, like she's explained it, so I do understand what you're saying. My question to you is, is there any documentation anywhere that says you, after this letter that you submitted, that says that they're like, yep, you know, the one says, this has been, you know, accepted as resolved? Is there any documentation that shows everything is resolved? Or could you get that documentation that shows everything is resolved?
I don't know what else to do. The document, the letter that she has there already states that it's resolved.
Yeah.
And they paid back the seven hundred and some thousand. We still owe thirty-three thousand. That they would take out the next drop. That resolves it.
And they're continuing to do what we review. That's what they've stated. That it's not resolved.
If it wasn't resolved, they wouldn't have told us, this is how much you owe. We took this much.
It's not resolved.
Well, that's your opinion.
It is my opinion because that's the information that we have based on the letters that we've received from the treasury that says that you are in a do not spend status while they continue to evaluate this situation. I-
Right.
Maybe you can-
Until we get their last payment, we're not saying we do not do this.
Until treasury gets their last payment.
Correct.
Okay, so that goes back to what I just said where, nevermind.
They'll send me another letter by email when they take that thirty-three thousand out of the draw. Now, they may send a letter two months after they do it, but they will send a letter.
Again, like she says, we're at an impasse. Nobody wants to agree to anything very specific, so I, what'd you say? I don't know where to go forward from here. I want to move forward. I've been trying to figure out a way that we can move forward. It's not happening. Nobody's come to any even, like, not even close to the middle. I don't know how we move forward.
I-
I don't know what else I can do.
So-
I-
The letter that I just asked for, I think that counts.
Can you reach out to treasury and follow up on all this stuff that is in these documents that we've got? Everything that's contained or concerning ESAC. Because as Trish Ryan pointed out, there's things in there that relate to, or refer to graphs and whatnot. Do what you can to reach out to treasury and say, hey, I have got to get everything that's related to twenty twenty on out on ESAC.
The graphs, I don't know what you're talking about. The graphs, I'm not seeing the graph.
Well, that could be one of your questions in that. So basically what we're looking for is we want to dated, signed documents from treasury, from ESAC that show the date when they happened. Am I wrong, Greg?
I, yeah, we need all of that information, but you should have copies of it because it's your response to their compliance review. It's information that you would have supplied to the treasury in response to those items.
But the graphs came from the treasury?
No, it came from, it came from-
Where's where do you want?
I have to go back and find it. There's just, there's too much.
Motion.
Charts.
They talk about-
Charts, not graphs. Charts that were submitted.
From sheriff?
From the sheriff.
Charts that were submitted to treasury?
Yes.
Charts of what?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
I think, as I'm understanding this, when you sent the letter to the treasury, you included certain documentation to support the letter. Because I understand that that is what she's requesting.
Yes.
The documentation went with the letter that the feds would have reviewed in order to come to their decision.
Well, I know when Chelsea was dealing with the two ladies that Chelsea got with HR, Sherry. And we have the starting dates of different deputies, the Sherry, they were new deputies. That's, I don't know what other term they could be talking about other than that.
Right. And then there was something about the confidential fund and some things, so there had to be some supporting documentation that was sent along with, from the sheriff's office, whether you sent it, whether Chelsea sent it, or whoever sent it, for them to review and say, okay, this is resolved, like the RAP payment and all that. You had to have provided that, you being the sheriff's office, would have provided them with something that they would have looked at and said, yes, this satisfies us, so this is resolved. And believe that's what they're looking for, that's what Mr. Sherrill reported, is that supporting documentation, whatever it was.
Well, I understand that, but some of that, I know it was done verbally because I said here, Mr. Chelsea talked to him. And it's like, the RAP program, you know, the RAP program was financed out of asset forfeiture for twelve, fifteen years. Then they changed the rules so you couldn't finance RAP out of that anymore. So we quit, you know, we had to do that back. It's just like the guidelines for the imposition. Those were all set up by Homeland Security. There was a difference of understanding when they said it had to be a new position, which it was a new position for us, just wanted to do it properly. And that's what the difference was.
Right.
But a lot of that's talked about verbally.
Well, right, there's nothing to turn over verbally, but I think the, some, some sort of spreadsheet or something was probably sent to them by Chelsea through HR or HR or something like that, and I think that's what they requested.
No, Captain Morgan, I can get all the charges and find out.
Okay, so regardless of anything, we have to make a mention as to where we're at and what we're gonna do. So does somebody want to make a different motion?
I would move that we table signing of ESAC until February third of twenty twenty five in order to allow the board to do a more thorough review of all documentation related to treasury funds and the compliance review and make recommendations for compliance moving forward.
You have a second? Okay, I just have a question. So I, I just, I literally don't know where we're going from there. My suggestion, I'm just gonna make a suggestion, and my suggestion is, we're not signing it today. We're not saying that we're gonna wait sixty days. Would it be possible for you two to sit down, so you form a liaison, we current liaison with the sheriff, to figure out specifically what, to get the information that you're requesting? To also get potentially a letter from treasury saying that some of these, that these things have been resolved? And then also looking into a plan for how the board is participating, that those funds moving forward? And then I think there was questions about the MOUs and the certification for the SROs and DRO officers. Are those things you guys can meet together with and then come back with a realistic, like, timeline of what that looks like? That everybody's agreed upon, because that's gonna help us move forward. So you're okay with that? Are you okay with that?
Yes. So just to be clear, the MOUs that are supposed to be used are by state statute. So any MOUs that are drawn up, they need to be done according to what the state statute says.
Mike, are you with the school?
What MOUs are you talking about?
For school resource officers. If you're planning to have school resource, designated school resource officers, then there needs to be an MOU, and that's by state statute.
Didn't you submit for a grade for both for injustice for this position? So that's what she's saying. So like, let's say that we move forward, we would need to make sure that MOU is in place. I think that's what she's saying.
For justice.
Yeah. So is that something that you guys can do and then come back next week with an update? Not necessarily the full plan, just an update.
Can come back with an update that this, again, through- And-
Bottom line is, that last letter that you got from treasury tells you right there that it's not even resolved.
Okay, but it doesn't really take, I read the letter and I don't think it actually says that too. So I think what I'm asking for is just like, just like, yep, these have all been resolved. This is specifically how we're resolving that. The end. Which, I think that they should be willing to write all that.
But that's what that letter said.
I don't interpret it that way. I interpret it as, yeah, we're taking those funds, like repayment, but I don't interpret it as them saying, yes, you, you know, supplied us all of that information that they requested previously. I agree with you that that was sort of the solution. Like, don't agree that we fixed all of the other things. That's what I think we're looking, or at least that's what I'm understanding that we're looking for clarification on.
Well, there's no, there's no sense in having a budget here and having this.
That's, that is up, that is up to you. I guess I disagree, but that's up to you.
The thing is, we'll be here all day. We have the money to operate on.
Sure, and the board has to give you money to operate on, but the board doesn't have to agree with all of the ways in which you want to do the work that you're doing. We have to make sure that we're providing for the same need of the residents, but we don't have to agree to do it in the same manner that, or we don't have to agree to fund it in the same manner that you would fund it. From my perspective, it would make more sense to go forward with a plan than it would to walk away and turn our hands up. But that's just my opinion. Something I asked again. Can you three meet and come back next week with at least an update and an idea of when we can do this?
I don't see what else.
I'll try it. I have pretty limited availability this weekend next, but I will do my best.
I don't know what you, what you remember.
Well, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So for now, we're not making any decision. We're just tabling this and then bring it back down. We put an update, it sounds good.
Motion.
Okay, next item is setting the number of deputies for Seward County Sheriff's Department. I don't know specifically, is it your agenda item?
It was mine.
Okay.
So we've had a lot of conversations in relationship to the budget and the number of deputies. And at this point, I think that we just need to make a good transition from us to, are we gonna set the number of deputies? So then the sheriff knows how many individuals he has within his office. And then that will lead into the next item on the agenda, which is the budget. Because I feel like we continue to spin our wheels as to what's agreed upon, what's not agreed upon, how many people. And I think that we just need to, we need to make a decision.
Would you tell me?
So I'm gonna just throw this out to, do we set the number of people in the defense office or in any other office?
No. This is by statute that the board can do this.
I understand that.
No, we don't. We also don't have the statutory authority to be able to do that.
What was that?
We don't have the statutory authority to assign the number of employees or within the county attorney's office.
According to this statute, you don't have the authority to assign the number of deputies. I have it.
That is not a correct meaning.
What's that?
I said, again, that's not, that is not an accurate statement of the, of the law.
Which statement?
That the deputies, the county board does not have to be there. Specifically doesn't, and there's, again, there's case law as well.
I gave you the statute.
I understand you gave me that statute, but there's another statute. There's also a case directly.
Right, there's two conflicting statutes, and then you have an attorney general's opinion right here in the states that the sheriff has.
That's what it says.
Do I need to read it to you? In this case, it is clear county officials and not the county board have the power to establish salaries of the officials, employees, therefore, the county board attempt to, I don't have any glasses, I can't-
It's correct. What it says is that the county board sets the number of deputies. And the mode and manner of employment, like setting their, setting their responsibilities and setting their salaries. That is what is up to the sheriff, but setting the number of deputies is up to the board. I've read, I've read it.
Okay, so that means the agenda item is setting the number of deputies for Seward County Sheriff's Department. Does anyone have a number or suggestion or even a motive?
I see that I have a recommendation of seventeen sworn full- I can see that I have a recommendation of seventeen sworn full-time deputies.
I swore against certified, right?
Certified, yes.
It's not exclusive to rank or just sworn deputies?
Yes.
That can be captains all the way down to regular deputy.
Yes. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean that's full-time?
It's full-time.
Okay.
Yeah, I said previously, I was in favor of seventeen, it was pulling through to eighteen, like the investigator.
I see, we're at eighteen. And that doesn't include part-time or does?
That does not include part-time, it's full-time.
Meaning, you're not suggesting any full-time, you're just saying seventeen and eighteen, right? Okay. Anybody else?
Is there any gadget that I'm not aware of or which I wouldn't pick? That states that the county has to provide twenty-four hour sheriff coverage?
I think that's, yeah, I, I think for a part, it's be available twenty-four hours.
Now, is that meaning that we have to be twenty-four hour on duty?
I don't know.
Or is that?
I mean, like on call, that's my question.
Barb, any idea?
I don't know. I have to, I have to check in.
Okay, so we have it on the table, seventeen, eighteen, is anybody want to make a motion?
I don't know, probably eighteen sworn deputies for Seward County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. If you follow those.
Each one?
Sworn.
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 Yep.
Sir Brock, you?
Yes.
Fine. Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Car.
I don't believe we should be setting the number of deputies, so no.
No, I also think that the way that the board can, I, I think it's the board's responsibility to set the budget. And so, I know you disagree with me on that, but it's our responsibility to set the budget and make sure you have the funds available to do what you need to do to provide safety for Seward County. I don't necessarily agree with the full setup, I don't necessarily agree that there's a plan moving forward, but I also don't want to set the number, I don't think that that's my role. I would do it for any other department, so that's just where I'm at. But there's three, four, two against, which means it passes, and we might need a resolution stating.
Okay, based on compensation.
Well, so that's, that, I mean, that's part of the budget.
Well, that, yes.
Budget, we can't deal with a total of two.
We have to set the comp, we have to set the compensation.
Each, or have you said?
I think that's, that's, that's up to him, that's not, I'm sorry.
It's the total amount for all sworn, it's the total amount for all sworn.
I mean, I guess you could do it in two resolutions, but they have to be pretty close together, I mean, you have to. If you want to do a resolution, it actually doesn't have to be done by a resolution, if you don't, if you did, so it can wait. It should be done by motion, I hate it, it's planned to do it by resolution, just so there's a, there's a record of it, but you can pass the motion today.
Well, we already did toss the motion today.
You can pass the motion today like you did, and then, once the compensation is decided, then there can be a resolution that can go through.
Okay.
Do we list it as a total amount?
Yes.
So kind of like tied it with the, the sheet where it was like a number and then?
Right. And then a total dollar amount.
Okay.
So what you would have to change each year?
You can't, you don't have to, you can, it makes some sense to do it like you do in the reorganization meeting, but you don't have to, it remains at that number unless sworn, so that is changed.
So, but I mean, the compensation would change each year.
Right. So when we had discussed this previously, it would make sense that we discuss it prior to setting the budget? Because if you're going to allow for an additional officer, then that's what you would, that's the time that you would discuss it. Because you would have, have to have those funds to the budget.
So by next week then, we need a budget that shows what that total is and what the true story is, and we don't have any, we don't have any more time. We just don't have any more time for the budget, so this is what the board decided, this is what the board decided, but now it's up to the sheriff to tell us what those, what the costs of those are at this point, to put back into the budget and any other expenses that would be related, so. We'll have to revisit this again next week. We already called it up, it was three, four, two against.
I, I, I know the vote, but I didn't hear Sherry call the votes.
Oh, she did, she called.
No, I did. Voting affirmative for Sir Brocky Heine in treaty and voting no for current. So you will give me Claire some new numbers that.
You understand we're all, we're below that eighteen that you just voted on.
Maybe I really did a lot of.
Because two of those positions are paid for out of asset forfeiture. So we're already down to seventeen.
But I don't think that that's, I, incorrect or wrong. I think it doesn't matter if they're paid out of asset forfeiture or not, what, what they voted on was period, like that's what he.
No, because when Wendy, when Wendy got her back for the position there, they both voted no. She told him, oh, I don't need your approval to back the positions.
I think that's a, my, that's a, I think it's gonna have to be a Wendy thing, I mean, the way that I'm understanding it is this is what they were voting on, they were saying, doesn't matter how they're being paid for, you need to submit a budget that says eighteen certified full-time deputy. That's what, that's what the motion, basically, I, I think that that's what, am I wrong in what you guys?
No, that's exactly, the difference is that the, there's no statutory authority to set the number of deputies.
Right.
My thought of eighteen was, I think you have like twenty-one or two total deputies. What do you have now?
Oh, I remember. Well, total, I could have written down twenty-two deputies, one sheriff, three admin, but that includes part-time, right? Because there would be four then.
Two captains, four sergeants.
There are four admin positions.
Nine road, nine road deputies, two court, one task force, one investigator.
One civil process.
I mean, sergeants, you said?
Four.
Yeah.
That's correct, but the civil process.
Twenty-two deputies, I mean, one sheriff, total four admin.
Four task force officers.
I, that doesn't, that doesn't matter.
I, no, I understand.
Oh, you're saying.
This is what we've got now.
But I think that one you're referring to is really technically admin.
Which one?
Task force.
So I thought it was not an officer, so he's the fourth admin position.
That's not what we're referring to.
Okay, sorry, that's who I thought you were referring to.
We could go through and put names on it if you wanted, probably should have.
No, I would think you, that's his responsibility, we, we should not do that.
I'm just saying, this is what was told to me, this is information I have.
Yeah.
I have two captain, they have two captains, four sergeants, nine road deputies, two court, one task force and one investigator.
That's eighteen. And then two part-time with one open position, I think that's what the twenty-three was, when we originally talked about this. Is that twenty-two?
So there's two part-time.
And we still had one open position there where we kind of discussed.
Did we set you for that?
And I was kind of set the budget.
Oh, yeah, when last year, was it budget?
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, so, all right. We have to have a budget that comes back that depicts that and I guess is a real true representation, representation of the expenses of the sheriff's department too, because right now we also don't have any ESAC sign. So.
So I was trying to point out.
Yep.
It's gonna be considerably more than that, isn't it?
Okay, any other comments, questions, Claire? I'm only asking you on some of the new sheet, Claire, Sherry, that's up to me. All right. So you will bring this back around my seat? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to her.